So we did get fifty six thousand dollars for having one marijuana establishment.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe everybody of course has an idea what to do with that money.
Oh, God, yeah.
But, you know, I think it's a quota. I think we need to look at these things.
Seconds on the buzzer. It was great game. Yeah, had a good time.
After we pay for the drugs. I mean, if you want to give money to upset, give it up. What of the money they can get from?
Yeah.
Kind of a good idea.
I was flying.
Yeah.
My gosh. Yeah. Well, we'll see.
Flying was, well, see what I did.
Yeah.
Anyway.
And I gotta get over this phobia here of not flying.
We are gonna get new equipment.
We are now.
I always drive down Chicago. So what I did is I parked my car in a long term rental.
Yeah.
Took a bus to Midway.
Yeah, when's that coming in?
Through a lot of Midway.
The new equipment for?
Well, they, I think they have to wait until they can, because, you know, everything has a problem.
I know our CEO, she and her husband and their son, they took a few little breaks, trips.
At work, anything that's not coming up.
They said it was home quicks, zero weather, three.
Are you having any delays in your?
Every trip they got delayed somewhere, had to spend the night doing something.
Constantly.
Constantly?
So Getty, one gets Getty this week. Better get a few different distributor.
So what's the deal?
Can you guys be out of the Spaghettis? Well, it didn't come in on the truck. Then you have to scramble around and, you know, along, because we get a certain brand and then the other places don't have a certain brand and you don't know where you're getting this one, you have to get something else. Isn't good compared to the other stuff that we got.
So I just wonder why here. Why is all this, you know, it's kind of like?
I don't know. There can't be a shortage. And they say they have enough drivers for the trucks, so I. I'm baffled. I'm baffled why they don't have that. Chicken too. Chickens, I guess I can kind of see chicken because of the avian flu and all that stuff right now, you know, and now they've moved it to a nominee, but.
Do we just make some of this stuff up to increase?
They might.
I am thinking, you know.
Like with steaks, our steak price went up probably like fifty percent, you know, since I'm probably just in years.
I know. And that's in fact business.
And it hasn't gone down. You think it'd go down as the supply?
Yeah, there's a very little, very little delay. It's like six hours from Toronto to down.
It's kind of like gas, you know, keep it up there. I couldn't believe the difference. We went down to Green Bay and it was down like three, four a gallon and it's like four something up here, four twenty. Man.
And how's the number? It was thirty ninety-nine? So, so what's the deal? I mean, you know, where are we paying for it?
And it's just a few more miles of road. It's gotta be from the same distributor that everybody else gets it from. Yeah, it was kind of like a few years back, the, all the beer distributors got together and fixed prices on the beer.
Was that what they did?
Pay for beer. Attorney general took them apart and they got it for price fixing.
Yeah, why do people, yeah, I mean, really, they're really just hurting, potentially they're hurting themselves.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Everybody forgets that's what I'm doing as well.
That's what I said about so many, you know.
Do they come back here?
The people that remember, they decide the people that it impacts for the rest of their lives, they remember. And it's not usually the case of beer.
Even about certain people, there's some you're, even about certain people, a lot of other people are forgotten and they don't remember what you did a long time ago.
Oh, my gosh, that's what, that's part of small community too, what you said. Sometimes I just have to sort of let some, I just let some of us know, I feel really. You know, eventually it all sort of catches up with people. My mom used to say it all the time. Lake is really a pretty.
In your packet?
In packet.
Well, I got, I got the, uh.
They're hard to see, that's what I will say.
Yeah, here's the utility.
Because, um, all the people, all the eyes can't read any of this.
Oh, those are the big plans over there. You can see them.
Is Bethany not coming?
Nope, not tonight.
Oh, boy.
Think she had a trip planned or something.
Hope she gets where she wants to go.
Actually, it was work really.
We didn't get to go where, we didn't get back to Marquette one time, a couple weeks ago.
I don't think there's any plane landing in this.
No.
Supi.
My wife and kids, they flew up for, they were like four thirty.
Oh, okay. Lucky you. Okay.
First note I'm gonna make here is about Tony's kitchen.
Tony's got the kitchen, all right. There's a funky little place.
Okay, it's seven PM on Wednesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Call the planning commission meeting to order and we'll start out with the roll call.
Steve Avon and Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles and Nest Road.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Wenzel, Norwood Street.
Eric Powers, Staff Pointer.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Manager.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as per banter.
Second.
Call in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from the previous meeting. Do I see those that came in a little bit later on? The emails? Okay, any public comment? I'm just trying to get somebody going here to make a motion.
I wondered what you were doing there. I wasn't even here, so I can't do it.
Jason's kind of looking like, okay.
And I think I can't do it because I wrote them. I wrote it right up there.
Okay.
So I think that's the two of you.
Moved to approve minutes.
Okay. You supporting?
Well, I, I wasn't here, but I could support the motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. Well, I think you can still vote to accept them.
Can I?
I think, I think so.
You can't abstain if you seconded the motion.
You can't?
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't want to improperly say that we're okay if I wasn't here, but that's fine.
So you're a yes vote?
I'm a yes vote.
Very well. Minutes are approved.
All right. Now we can do a public comment. Anyone wishing to make any comments right now on anything can step up and? No? All right, seen known, we'll move on to number six, new business. A site plan review, number zero four one three two two dash one. Jason.
Well, good evening, and we've been working, well, eleven years now with Mr. Brad Kremins from A Lindbergh Sons and Mike Conter from TBM Equities. They have developed a number of properties and a number of businesses in our community of note. TJ Maxx, Pet Smart, Alta, Shoe Sensation, Lowe's, Meyer, Freco, Burger King are within the portfolio of their development. Portfolio, and they are bringing to us a proposed forty-two hundred square foot, nine hundred and ninety-five square foot of finished floor area. Retail restaurant facility. The property is located, as you know, in between GFS and Riverside. And will, the proposed development will be located just east of Freco. So nice compact development maximizing the site, which is what the master plan calls for and what our zoning ordinance allows for in this area. Is a, I guess a higher density commercial development, which is, you know, helps with utility extensions, et cetera. So the property is highlighted here in yellow. It's approximately fifteen, I believe, in total. And this is part of the general business zoning district. This is the way the property looked back in two thousand seventeen. This was right before the highway project got going in full bore. See some site balancing activity here and then, of course, working with MDOT, they elected to relocate the driveway to better serve the site. You can see the beginnings of where the new driveway location is towards the middle of the site now. And this is a little bit further along, I think later in the year. Not sure how much longer, probably not too much longer, maybe a month or so. So this is just the general overview of the current site.
What's the, Jason, what's the business facility or industrial facility there with all the cars in the park?
That is Smith Construction.
Smith Construction.
Yep, so, yeah, you've seen Meyer there, Lowe's and their accompanying businesses there.
Yes, I see. Thank you.
As indicated, this is in the general business zoning district, so the, the land use itself is permitted by right. And this is a general view of what the site will look like upon approval and development of the site. So as far as access goes, we're gonna be accessing off of US forty-one. Eastbound traffic will utilize a tapered approach into the throat of the driveway. And then from there, people will have the opportunity, and if you notice on your plan set, there's a future development to the north and to the east of this that's proposed for later development and according to the developers, maybe within the next year or two. So excited to see that as well. And if you notice, I don't think our pointers work on this guy. I know they don't on the LEDs. But you can see the connection from GFS to Freco and into this, thank you, Mike, into the development. And that was something that the development team worked with their neighbor, neighboring property owner, GFS, to accommodate. So essentially, you're gonna have what should have been done in the township perhaps years ago, which is almost like a frontage road, but basically allowing people even to turn at Lowe's and come into the site as opposed to turning into the main driveway if they chose to do so. So this frontage road or driveway will connect all the way over to the gas station at Meyer effectively, which is across a lot of property and it should be to the benefit of all the businesses in the area. So working through the staff report, just touch on the highlights here. It's gonna be served by, utility wise, by eight inch main, water main and four inch sanitary sewer. Stormwater is proposed to be located, collected and conveyed back to a retention pond. And I suspect that that retention pond will suffice the entire development. So that may be a staged approach. But after the completion of the future development site you see here, that storm drain or retention detention area will accommodate the entire site.
Who approves the specifications for the retention pond?
The township does. We have a comprehensive stormwater ordinance, which was put in place, I believe, about five years ago now. And it's, it's the Cadillac of stormwater ordinances.
And who would, who on our, who, if we're working for the township, goes out and makes the determination or do you do that onsite?
Um, our public works director is in charge of the ordinance and ministering the ordinance. So if he needed somebody, I'm sure he could consult with somebody, but.
But I mean, we actually do an onsite inspection?
At some point we do, yes. Yep. Yeah, once it's completed and probably during construction too, just to make sure that things are being constructed as proposed.
So he reviews the specifications?
Correct.
Director of Project Public Works?
Yeah, and these things, Denny, over time, they kind of, you know, there's a process to development. So, you know, tonight is really site specific, looking at the ordinance, looking at the height and bulk requirements, generalities like that. Architectural design review by the fire department and by our public works team, that'll occur later on.
Okay.
After they're generated. So there is a basic floor plan that was, that was included in your packet.
Yeah.
Obviously, the parking requirements are met. We have, we have a restaurant with a, a drive-through. We require nine stacking spaces for vehicles as well as a pass lane. And you can see that that was accommodated for as well. Covered utility services. The fire department has reviewed the project. They have a few comments in there, more, more orientated towards architectural review. So those will be provided as, as the project develops. No known environmental issues. Landscaping and buffer yards, really, there's no required buffer yards per se because all of the businesses are similar in nature. But you do see that there are a number of plantings proposed here. There's the landscape plan. And you can see in the gray shaded area that that is the portion of parking lot which is proposed to be constructed in conjunction with this project. So parking is accommodated for quite certainly. Signs, of course, you saw some renderings of what signs are being proposed. We'll take a look at those separately as we do. The permitting, the lighting photometric that was provided meets our ordinance. They're proposing full cutoff downcast lighting, of course. And then other factors would just be to ensure that all of the county building permits, MDOT permits, which have been secured, they do have an approved driveway already. No new curb cuts are being proposed as a result of the development, which is really great for access management purposes. It would have been tough to probably site another driveway in the area just because of the continuous right turn off of four ninety-two or, yeah, four ninety-two, Wright Street, onto the highway. So there's that merging lane that happens there and then it works, but it's, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a challenge, I guess, for some people, because some people haven't been stopping there as opposed to just continuing like they're supposed to.
Are you talking about westbound coming off the roundabout there, right in front of Riverside Auto? Where there's also people turning into Riverside Auto on that same merge lane?
Yeah, yeah, that was a.
That's a sweet design there.
Remember that song and dance? We, we wanted to push that driveway considerably further west than it is currently located for that exact reason. However.
Too late now.
Well, what did we say earlier today? A good plan now is better than a better plan later. So we went with what we had. If you remember correctly, there was a lot of horse trading going on at that time with tunnel access, right away. Geometry needed for the roundabout, the, you know, I, I think in the end it all worked out and everybody got what they needed. We got the pathway, the tunnels installed. Riverside was also in as well as Lindbergh benevolent on the end of easement for us to continue that trail, the snowmobile trail in particular, trail eight to the north, that goes across this, this property too, so. It's, there's a lot of moving parts on these projects for sure. So again, other factors, acquire all the necessary drilling permits from Marquette County. And then B, of course, we have a financial guarantee of one percent of the estimated cost of development. At this time, it's six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So six thousand eight hundred dollars will be sent to the township to hold on to, to ensure that landscaping as-built plans and such are delivered to the township upon completion. With that said, staff recommends approval of the site plan contingent on the submission and approval of items three E, which is the final utility plans and more so the permitting portion of that. Because Eagle's gonna have to permit the eight inch main, I believe. So they'll work through that. Three F, fire prevention, so the fire department will review architectures once they're ready. Three I is signs, will permit the signs accordingly as they're submitted for. And four, which I just covered, other factors A and B. Development team's here to answer any other detailed questions or if you want to add anything to our background or staff report, you're more than welcome to do so.
Shouldn't, when you're doing the review recommendation, you've got the three E, F, I and four, shouldn't three D be in there as well? Because that hasn't been finalized yet.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's a good point. We, if there's a motion made, we will entertain that, three D, yep.
Three B or D?
Three D, which would cover the stormwater permitting, review and then any, well, we have a fee for stormwater, of course, but then that also covers the review, et cetera.
So are there tenants already for these buildings?
Yes, these, this will be a leasehold, very similar to their other properties, the shops of Marquette, the original one, which has TJ Maxx, Pet Smart, Shoe Sensation and Alta. Very similar situation. Whether the buildings are together or not, doesn't really matter.
So there's already tenants for that future building then too?
Oh, not, not aware of that and I'm sure.
Okay, so just for the restaurant?
That's correct. Yeah, the site plan is just for this specific portion of the property, actually.
Can you say which one it is yet, what the restaurant is?
That's up to the developers.
Michael Conter, seventy-five thirty-seven Moses Lane in Gregory, Michigan. I'd love to be able to tell you who it is. We're not permitted to by agreement. But I can tell you that it's a significant national retailer of note. It's one of those tenants that we refer to as a make a difference tenant in a project. They bring lovely design to the building, some mix of materials and colors that are sensitive to, to the project itself versus just a plain, flat surface. It's articulation, color and material change. It's one of those tenants that brings energy, that brings quality product and is well, well respected within their platform, within their community. They're great corporate citizens, community citizens. They, they involve in the community and they want to make sure that it's, they're responsive to the community. This is gonna be their only location in the upper peninsula. And so they want, they took a long time in locating this particular building and property. When they came to Marquette Township and felt this was the nicest because of the co-tenancy and mix with all the other tenants that are there, whether it be Lowe's, Meyer, Gordon Food, TJ Maxx, Pet Smart and the like. And so as a local tenant and as a unique food provider, it'll represent a creative sales to the community, to Marquette Township. They're anticipating people coming here from a broader stretch and as such, they've added more seating area inside than they typically would. They're anticipating more seating than drive-through and they also have an outdoor seating area as well that you have seen in the submission.
So would you say this, since you're, you have disclosed it's a bakery cafe on your plan, right? So would this be similar to, say, Obon Pang, that type of place?
It would be in the same genre.
Okay.
Same quality.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Probably more like Panera.
It would be in the same genre, the same quality.
We're gonna wiggle stuff out of you here, so.
But I'm gonna answer.
I know you're, thank you.
No disrespect, but, yeah.
So is, do you know what the ratio is of the, their sales for drive-through versus inside seating?
Well, again, they're anticipating greater indoor seating here. What we find is a broad spectrum, especially after pandemic, of what's happened in the, the fast serve business. So McDonald, by way of example, now gets eighty plus percent of their revenue through drive-through. That's not the case with this particular tenant, but they're, they're more of a fifty-fifty blend.
I guess the reason I ask is my, my one concern is creating a kind of a bottleneck there with just the one entrance in and out. And there's a lot of, a lot of parking spaces back there coming up in the future. And was there any way that you could put an entrance on the west side of the building there? So that you'd go in one way and come out another?
Well, I would like to point out, if you don't mind me being wrong, but we do have, and this was important, it was important for us to secure it, it was important for this particular tenant to see. Because this is connection to all those wonderful tenants to the west of us that they see as an opportunity to cross shop within this particular property. And this is lovely, I don't know if you've used this approach yet, getting clean and around, it's far easier than getting onto forty-one and then connecting to those others. So this is really a significant ingress and egress point into the overall property.
Right, I agree. It is and, you know, I think with all that parking in there, it's gonna be a lot harder to get in and out of there. And it's kind of creating another situation that we had before over there where, you know, you're gonna have a deceleration lane in there, I'm, I'm assuming. And, you know, when you have cars coming in and you're, you're waiting to leave, it's so hard to see the oncoming traffic coming from the other way and that's what caused a lot of those accidents up there.
We appreciate that very much. And, you know, we've lived through that as well and that was part of why we wanted to secure this. Because it safely transfers customers to other areas of the shopping center and then provides easy ingress and egress back on the forty-one through the roundabouts and the like. So we really consider this a major ingress egress point as we do this. We would anticipate seeing as much traffic here as through here. The other thing I want to note is Freco, which has been in operation now for four years. They don't, they don't have the same hours as the retail tenant. Their hours of operation conclude at five?
So they won't be serving any food there at four, five o'clock?
No, no, they, they will, but what I'm pointing to is Freco traffic dissipates.
After five?
After five.
And what about the business in the back? How, and you're gonna, so you're gonna access from the highway there and through that, through the parking lot of Gordon Food Service? Because that's not actually a, a, a street through there, a road through there.
It's a, it's a connecting point.
Parking lot, that's a parking lot you're driving through.
No differently than it's a parking lot you drive through, the shops of Marquette, Lowe's and Meyer. Correct.
Okay, but you're still putting more development in the back?
We're not putting, we're not.
But we're showing one right here.
We're not putting.
Future, future commercial building estimated floor footed, finished floor elevation, eight ninety.
Go to the overall plan. We're not putting anything there at the moment. In the future, we have development here.
Yeah, where do you anticipate that access to come from?
The same two ports.
Same two points.
And we don't believe that is overloaded at all, frankly. There's more traffic coming into the two ports off of forty-one at.
You don't believe that or you don't know that, or you know that?
I absolutely know that. Look at the tra, look at the traffic, please.
What kind of, what kind of traffic floor are you looking at there? How many, how many cars per day? So for that facility and maybe the future development?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Meyer is two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet with fifteen.
Meyer doesn't have an access to a parking lot.
With fifteen hundred customers a day.
Okay.
Lowe's is one hundred and forty thousand square feet with five hundred customers today. Shops of Marquette is about sixty thousand square feet with about six hundred customers a day.
Okay.
And I'm not sure about the customer base at Burger King. Those are two ingress egress points for all that, all that.
But not just, so its parking lot is not though?
All through someone's parking lot.
Who's parking lot?
Myers, Lowe's.
There's an access road in front of Myers? There's a, an access drive in front of?
How else? How else? Does, these are integrated properties. They don't operate individually or on their own. They're integrated. People flow through parking areas, through drives that are connected to roads. That's the same thing that's here. They go through drives, through parking lots that are then connected to roads. I don't think this is unusual at all. And I think it's well, uh, designed to accommodate what will be the ultimate traffic flow in this property.
So this would be, in terms of that kinda concept, this would be similar to between, uh, Lowe's and the adjacent Petco area where you go, this is what you're talking about.
Correct.
Like for this. Okay, forget it.
Okay, I've got time for some questions here. I've got some notes.
Sure.
Okay, let me grab my, my sheet here where I've got my notes. Uh, first of all, on your signage, the signage that's shown on here is for a store in Racine, Wisconsin. Is that me our zoning?
The signage hasn't been submitted for approval yet.
Okay, so, so these, this is just something they threw in here from a project in Racine for all the signage?
It's designed to show the.
Represented this signage.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So the dimensions don't need anything?
The dimension of the.
Signage?
Of the monument sign is what we're asking.
Okay, but there, there, there are a number of them here. So, okay, so that's, that's, that's just common for, for every store, is it same?
They are a national brand.
Okay, and their signage meets our zoning ordinance?
Again, Steve, they haven't submitted for approval of signage yet. These are just conceptual renderings for you to review so you can get a flavor of what they're bringing to market.
Okay, so we're not gonna approve the site plan tonight then?
We're not gonna approve the signage tonight.
Okay, so is that in your, uh, not, you got to see more of that?
It's one of the staff's recommendations for approval is contingent upon this middle and approval of signage.
Okay, okay. Okay, so then the other one here, so when you said you had the township, does the, uh, has a great strong drainage ordinance?
Stormwater ordinance.
So who does the calculations to check their, their stuff? Is that the drainage commissioner?
A qualified engineer.
Does the drainage commissioner do that? Okay. Okay, and then, uh, was there a variance granted on this site? Did we do some kind of a, some, did something come before the planning commission for this site where we granted a variance? Is that possible? Did my memory serve me correctly on that?
I don't believe so.
I thought we did.
Riverside did because the pathway was close to the right away.
You're, you're sure we didn't do anything in this area? I, it seems to me we did, but I may be mistaken.
What would be?
Size, setbacks, that kinda stuff?
The setbacks are all.
No, for, for, for the, the previous building in here, the, uh, the Freco building. Was there anything that was done on the planning commission side on that, that they requested?
I don't believe so, no. No, I mean, the side yard setbacks.
No, 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 I'm, I'm assuming there's something presented to the planning commission that we, we passed on this site. You don't recall?
I don't recall.
Okay. Could you check on that? I think there may have been, but I don't recall that.
Sure.
And then what, what is nine-hundred-and-ninety-five, uh, square feet of finished floor area versus forty-two hundred square feet? What, what's the, what's the distinction there?
Go ahead.
The, that's the difference between the finished floor elevation and the square footage, which I called out forty-two hundred square feet to the nine-ninety-five or nine-fifty-five, that's a finished floor elevation.
Yes, that was my mistake.
Oh, it's not square footage?
That was my mistake.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Nine-ninety-five finished floor elevation. So the other building you proposed back there's gonna be a hundred feet lower?
It will not be a hundred feet lower, no.
Oh, it says you have a finished floor elevation of eight-ninety.
It, it won't. It'll be, um, once the, all the grading is completed, it'll all be in play. But there will be, uh, it, it will be slowed down in order to accommodate drainage and potential.
Jason, would you, uh, I know you did this before, but would you repeat the, uh, sub-paragraphs under paragraph three of site plan review that we are not passing out tonight, but will be subject to further, uh, approval and review?
Yep. So the final design for stormwater, signage.
Signage is I, where's stormwater? Grading stormwater is D.
Okay. Uh, E is the utility fees and connections in final design permitting. Uh, we're gonna add D to that, which is the grading. E is utilities. F are the architectural plan review. Signs are I. And four are the, to ensure, we put this on all of our.
Oh, the escrow?
Yep, the escrow, well, yeah, financial guarantee and the, uh, ensuring that all the other regulatory permits that are required are submitted and approved.
So if, uh, the chair entertains a motion to accept this, would, would the motion have to state that it's, the motion to approve subject to paragraphs D, E, F, I of your, uh, site design, uh, plan review?
Yeah, you'd simply make a motion to approve the site plan contingent, contingent upon the supplemental and approval of items three E, or three D, E, F, I, and four. Or you could just say, uh, the items listed in the staff report.
Items listed, this, that makes more sense. All right. I make a motion. Is it time to make a motion yet? Is it appropriate at this point?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to have a little more discussion first. I have some more questions myself, and I don't know if Linda does. We haven't really covered everybody yet. I thought Steve had more than just that one. Were you done, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. Danny, you don't have any?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Linda?
I don't really have any questions. Thank you.
Uh, what I'm kinda having problems with is trying to figure out the materials on the buildings themselves. You know, like if their windows are, you know, it's so hard to read that print, you know, as to, is, is the light blue stuff, um, windows there? Are they out windows?
These are windows and doors. Is it at the door? These are a row of windows, another entry, another entry, and windows. Same thing here, that's the drive-through. These are windows. This is a masonry material here. This is, um, a dry-vid material. And then this is a, um, specially-made weatherproof, uh, fiber product.
So on the, on the west?
And then there's screening, I'm sorry to interrupt, there's screening of rooftop.
Okay. On the west elevation there, there aren't any windows in there? That's just all a blank wall?
Because it's the rear, that's where all the utilities are coming in, the ladder's up, and menu board would be over in that general area. So that's why it's, there's a door there, just a man door.
Wouldn't that be the north elevation?
No, the north elevation is where the drive-through is going. So if.
Okay, so west elevation is facing the highway that way?
The west is facing Freco.
Right.
The south is facing the highway.
Okay.
The east is, elevation is facing, um, that drive up. And then the north elevation is essentially where the drive-through is coming.
Okay. So the north, those are all windows and a door and there are two. That's, that's where all the drive-through lanes go through.
So if you could go to the drive-through, so this is, these are windows into the, uh, seating area. This is the drive-through itself and then just more windows in the back of the house. And then if you turn around, this would be the rear or what is the back of the house and where, um, the west side of the elevation, there's a man door. And this, this is for refrigeration and this is where all the utilities would be stacked and coming through on the back of the building.
So it's kinda similar to Applebee's and two, cause they're, they've got everything on the west side then. Okay. Is that, um, driveway in there, is that just gonna be two lanes? There's, there's not gonna be like an island in the middle to divide the traffic at all?
There will be, uh, a visor there. If you can see, it's actually somewhat of a median, you know, the landscape as well.
I, I mean, coming in off the highway?
Coming in off the highway, uh, there's no median here. It's just a typical drive.
Yeah, and if you're referring to a pork chop at the entrance, it's not required. You get right in, right out only.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, and the project, actually the highway project gave, uh, a lot of safety benefits to this and their continued development of the site because you don't have the five lanes anymore. You have four lanes. Everybody knows which way you're going and, uh, that's super helpful.
And there, there will be, can't remember now, there's a deceleration lane in there right now?
There is a taper, um, and I think the idea is that, you know, when they submitted for their driveway permit back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, you know, this was the access that they approved, uh, MDOT approved. And I suspect, and we did have some discussion today about the future development of the site. And at the time when the retail component comes into play, there may be some adjustment to that. But what you don't wanna do is have a really long right turn lane because if you look back here, well. Okay, so you, if you're coming out of the roundabout, you have that tapered driveway, which tapers you and brings you back into the driveline, right? What we don't wanna do is have a taper or a full right turn lane that is anywhere near connecting to that exit because otherwise somebody's gonna come out of that, stay right in that lane, and you're gonna have trouble. So we'll, we'll work with MDOT at the time when the future development comes and we'll work with the developer to design that properly for, for access there. This particular project, uh, when MDOT reviewed it, uh, it, it meets their requirements at this time. They have a permit for the driveway already. It was designed, built out exactly the way that it was, uh, applied for. But we're cognizant of it. We had a discussion about it. And at the time when this additional retail component comes into play, we'll probably make, recommend to make some adjustments to it. But this project has been, you know, costed out. Um, it's a tight budget according to the developers and, you know, Tuesday before the planning commission meeting's not really the time to, uh, make adjustments to, uh, the site plan. So MDOT's aware of it, we're aware of it, and we'll continue to monitor. Obviously, the developers want what's best for their customer, um, and we want the, what's best for our residents and visitors as well.
Couple, couple more things. On the application that was submitted, there was to be included a narrative. Was a narrative included that described the project, location, long-term plan, impact on emergency traffic, schools, utilities? Is that, I mean, they signed right on me to. And then twelve copies of the site plan would they provide as well?
We don't require twelve copies. Um, there's probably a few things in the ordinance that need to be adjusted just because of technology.
Okay, you do a narrative?
I did do a narrative. It should've been attached. Uh, I'm not sure if it's when it came from Coleman, whether they attached it or not. But I'm happy to send that off to you.
Okay. Yeah, it wasn't in the Coleman packet.
Did you get any plans at all? One set of full, one full set of plans or anything?
Three, three full-size sets are what we require.
Okay.
One goes to the fire department, one goes to DPW, and one goes to us.
Okay.
We, we try not to make it too arduous. We only request what we need.
Anything else from anyone? Okay. All right, Danny, if you still wanna make your motion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to. Make a motion to approve the site plan, the site plan. Proposed nine-ninety-five SF restaurant retail facility. Submitted here by TBM Equities and Michael Conter. Subject to the items, subject and contingent to satisfactory completion of the items listed in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call in favor?
Do you wanna call load on us?
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, fellows. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Looking forward to finding out what it is.
Yeah, Jason, please, can you double-check to make sure that?
Don't kidnap Brad and find out.
On this, on this site and on the planning commission, if there's any, anything that would stipulate on this site that might impact this?
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Open for breakfast there?
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Okay. All right, moving on. Unfinished business none at this time, correct, Jase?
That's correct.
Number eight, correspondence at Scott Memorial Recreation Area.
Uh, this was just on here to let you know that, uh, staff did successfully submit, uh, an application to acquire sixteen acres of property from the, um, I guess it would be the, uh, Tanya Ra, or Tanya Scott and Jim Ross owned property. So we should find out about that or some preliminary review sometime in the summer. And then the short-term rental webinar update. Um, Eric, do you wanna detail what you saw?
Yep, so I, on, uh, March thirty, attended a, it's, it was run by Granite, I believe the name of the organization is. It's a private organization that helps, uh, both property managers as well as local governments manage STR, short-term rental, compliance and general management. Um, it was, to me, very eye-opening, especially in light of some of the conversations that we've been having, um, in this body as far as, uh, I don't know if you wanna call it further regulation, but, um, getting a little bit more, uh, robust and maybe strict as to how we're dealing with these. Kind of the over, and I, I intend to, for the next planning commission meeting, uh, compile kinda like what you have for the site plan review, somewhat of a staff report from this, maybe some recommendations as far as, um, some action items, uh, this body can take moving forward. But the overwhelming or overarching message was if you address safety within these short-term rentals first, the effects will kind of trickle down to those other concerns that we are seeing neighbors come to this, uh, to those requests. Whether it be noise, traffic, um, those other, uh, very common concerns that we hear, hear. Something to note that I thought was very interesting, uh, they pointed out that fifty-four percent of short-term rental renters in twenty-twenty-one had never rented before. And so, again, when you address safety with the people renting the properties, um, that's gonna trickle down and, uh, lead to, uh.
Enhanced.
Enhanced, I, more revenue on the, both the rent or the property owner's side as well as a, uh, again, more robust and better program on the local government's side. So it really looked at the safety issues from four different perspectives. The first one being water incidents, including pool drownings and, uh, watercraft. They did mention pool drownings specifically in Florida. I know we don't have a lot of pools on properties up here, especially short-term rentals, but the, the watercraft incidents, one, those examples, uh, I guess, kinda hit close to home. Um, being, the example used was somebody in a kayak who didn't have a life jacket and they find him washed up on shore. And he was staying at a short-term rental and this kayak was just left out at this short-term rental. Um, so whether it be a list of rules or here's where you can go look up the weather, um, that's gonna be forecast for when you're gonna go out on this kayak and things like that. Um, yeah, Danny?
Yes, I have a question on this. Does, does our, uh, short-term rental ordinance address the need for proof of indemnity insurance by the, uh, rentor?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Not, no, it does not. We wrestled with that a little bit.
What, what was the, why, why, why don't we have it?
I think the planning commission at the time thought it might be an overreach, but what we're looking to do, and I think what Eric is saying, is that, you know, based on your comments that we received. some of the testimony being conveyed by applicants and the notification of the neighbors, we feel that there's a better way to do it, so that's what we're gonna propose to you at the next meeting, is bring some kind of surmised detailed report on some of the things that we can do to tailor what he experienced to our community.
Can, can you, whenever you decide to make this additional presentation to us on this, could you include a discussion of pros and cons of are requiring the rentor to have at least a million dollars in indemnity insurance?
Yep, so I'll finish up here, so those four safety issues, water incidents, general fire safety, which I know we've talked about getting those inspections a little bit more by the book. But that was another one, general fire safety, egress, smoke detectors, things like that. Construction and maintenance, which kind of came up in the case a couple times ago, where the gentleman, the neighbor gentleman had stated the electric in that house is faulty, or something along those lines, I don't remember specifically. But general upkeep and maintenance of the house, and then we, the presenter also talked about residential properties being used for that pseudo-commercial use. Increased use of dryers and washers, increased use of the refrigerator, things like that. So like I said, it was very eye-opening, I do intend on compiling that report, I can certainly forward along this recording of the webinar, if anybody would be interested. It really kind of, the wheels were already turning on, on this issue, and it sped them up, so to speak, so.
If the state takes control of short-term rentals away from local governments, will they take that control away also for fire safety, electrical, and inside of the?
That's untermined at this time. I think what we'd end up doing is moving to a licensing program, where you would still be required to get a license, even though the use might be carte blanche. There, there could still be a licensing component to it, I believe.
Where is that legislation, you know?
It, as far as I know, it's not really gotten anywhere. I'm sorry, I can't.
Is it still in committee, you know?
Uh, yes, I believe it is.
I, I thought it passed the House.
Well, we can give you an update on that, too.
Yeah. In one of our
We'll do a, we'll do a
Short-term rental.
Short-term rental workshop.
So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, like I said, we'll provide more information at an upcoming meeting, and if you'd be interested in that webinar, I'd be happy to send it along, so.
And then C under correspondence is just to keep you apprised that the DDA development plan is moving forward, there was a meeting yesterday. I was not in attendance, I don't know if you want to recap that at all.
Yeah, I was just, so what this development plan will do, there are a set of, some projects that the DDA could potentially help with. Park acquisition, as noted under A, I mean, that's a project in there, that obviously is, will be, fingers crossed, funded through funding sources that are not associated with the DDA. But other improvements, including lighting along the corridor, pathways, kind of general infrastructure, things like that. So this development plan spells out those projects, and the committee talked about how we're gonna prioritize them moving forward. And then as well as just kind of general comments as far as the content of the plan. Almost a workshop of sorts we had, or a working session, I should say.
Yeah.
So.
Once we get a final draft of that, we'll make sure that you guys are providing your insight on it, too, but it's fairly, it's required, and we're trying to make it as concise as possible.
Do I remember you saying before that townships can't have TIF plans?
No, they can, I'm just saying that politically, they're not very popular at this time. And it has a lot to do with who shares those revenues when they're being paid back over time, so.
So the township really doesn't want to, well, the township wouldn't really lose anything. The, the, it would, actually, a TIF plan would be beneficial to the township, wouldn't it?
Correct, yeah, I think where the rub is, is with the school district and the counties and the other collecting agencies, so. And I'm not saying they couldn't happen, that we couldn't have a TIF districts in, in the, in the community, but that has not been explored at all.
Think maybe it should be?
Recently. Uh, it depends, it depends on the scale of some of the projects, and whether they, you know, warrant tax increment financing, as opposed to going out and getting some grants and doing it that way. When having the DDA supply the seed money for the grants, or matching funds. Denny?
Yes, Jason, I have a question, and maybe you know just a ballpark figure of what this is. Consider, considering the amount of property taxes that are collected by the township, what percentage or range generally of that fund is returned to the township? I mean, my understanding is, we, the township collects the property taxes, and then sends the money to the county, and then the county sends back a remit to us, is that the way it works?
Correct.
And how much?
Effectively, it's, it's, we're a collect, we're, we're a pass-through.
Right, and what do we get back from?
I, I could get that information, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
It'd be interesting to see what, what we, what the county gives back to us.
Well, with regard with regard
The township budget.
Oh, it is?
Okay. I would think, yeah.
Okay.
With regard to the DDA and their contribution to the community through millage, so right now, I think we're enjoying a half-mill for two years, and that is currently generating about fifty thousand dollars a year. At a half-mill. Now, the DDA has the ability to levy up to two mills without going for a vote, and that would be two hundred thousand dollars a year. Politically, we don't think that's very popular, and plus, it's just not needed at this time. We believe that a half-mill to a mill could probably get us where we want to go with some of these projects that we're doing. Safety improvements, aesthetic enhancements, you know. DDA could be pretty flexible with how they spend their money, you could be adding public pedestrian infrastructure, farmer's market area. You know, you could contribute or help develop the park property, if you will. Bus shelters for Mark Tran, there's a litany of things that the DDA could participate in, and that's where the excitement is, is knowing that the DDA can assist with some of these long-range corridor enhancements that we want to accomplish for the safety and benefit of our residents and visitors. But in order to do any of that, you gotta have a development plan, so that's what we're working on now.
Yeah, there was a nice press you got on the park in the, in the newspaper, it was nice coverage that they gave.
Oh, yeah.
Passage to that, yeah.
Shouldn't say that when TV six is here. No, Kristy Black is a, she, she does a good job, and
Yeah, that's it.
She's, I think she's very fair.
Yeah.
That's interesting. Thought all with the DDA?
At this time, yes.
Okay. Township board report, Mrs. Winslow.
Okay, so the Market Township Board met on Tuesday, April fifth. There was discussion from the library, and there was discussion from the single-track park grant request. There was support given for a Lake to Lake Cooperative invasive species management area letter to that group. We did approve the Market Charter Township Fire Rescue roster for two thousand twenty-two. We did approve a ten-year agreement with Market Little League, Superior Fast Fitch, and Market Senior High School to use our, I'm gonna call it a baseball field, which is probably incorrect, but our ball field. They'll be using it during the months of May, June, July, and August, and it will be stated when it will be used, so it will still be open for the public to use. Hopefully, we'll get their schedules posted, so we can support those teams. We also talked a little bit about funding capital improvements for next year, actually getting the capital improvement thing going, I really want to start that early. So I don't know, I talked to our chairperson a little bit about that as well, so maybe we can get some movement on that. We did get fifty-six thousand dollars for having one marijuana facility in our community from the state. How that will be spent has not been decided. And we also had a presentation from the school superintendent on the sinking fund renewal, and he did hand out some brochures. And if you haven't seen them, here's some extra ones.
Got one in the mail.
Same.
Okay, well, that's good, so then, he, he just gave the presentation, he handed those out, so I'm just sharing those with, we received those at our board meeting. No more than that. Our next meeting is scheduled for April nineteenth at six thirty. Are there any questions?
Good question. This Lake to Lake, what was, what was done, was that a resolution?
It was, let me just pull that back out, they wanted a letter of support to get some grant money to work on the invasive species management area. It, you know, when you drive on Wright Street and you see those big green leaf things? Do you know what I'm talking about? It's a invasive species, and so she's wanting us to help them get rid of that species, that invasive species.
Okay, what, I mean, what was the Lake to Lake thing, though?
Um, it's about, it must come from the lakes to lakes, it must move that way or something, or that's just the
Or inland lakes.
Yeah, that's just the name of the cooperative, that's what, how it was put on here.
Okay, I thought it was Lake Superior to Lake Michigan.
No.
Okay, thank you.
And I can actually, you know, we could, Lynn could send that letter for everyone to kind of see what it looks like, I, I don't know how that happens. How do, how do we get the planning commission to get more stuff, do I ask Lynn?
Get more stuff.
Well, like Lynn sends letters and stuff out, and then she copies us, maybe I'll, I'll ask Lynn.
Oh, I just was interested in.
Yeah, no, I think it's really interesting, and I think that thing that the young person talked about was that this invasive species is in people's yards.
Right.
Have you seen it? Is it up by you guys?
Pulled a lot of them, yeah, there are these little yellow, and I can't remember, tansies, tansies, tansies?
Oh, you pulled something, yeah, no, these are great big green leaves.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know.
They make wonderful bird bath kind of things, but, no, and you can't pull them out because of
This is a nonprofit that presented to you?
Yeah, I think, if I remember correctly.
And that's what it's called, Lake to Lake? Yeah, well, could you send me that letter?
I'll find the stuff, because I might be a little mixed up today.
Yeah, and was she looking for anything, just sponsorship from the county for a grant, or me, from the township?
I think she was looking for some money to come from the state of Michigan.
I see, okay.
Yeah, to help support their program, but I'll find out, it was quite interesting.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Well, while you're on that subject, about getting information like that, we were getting minutes before from the township board and the REC and the road committee, and we don't, we haven't gotten those in quite a while. Probably because they don't have any, as many meetings as they used to before, but maybe if we could get those again, that was kind of handy, to be able to read all that.
So, and then in this very nice Township Focus book that I get, magazine, it does have a nice article on funding capital improvement, so if anyone's interested, I'm sure we could scan it, right, Jason?
I'd be interested in seeing that.
I could scan it.
Okay.
I mean, if there's something in particular, I'm not gonna scan the whole document.
Just the letter, just the, I'll, I'll, I'll scan it. I'll get it for us.
Okay.
I can do that, right, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Might be online.
Did it, Lynn?
Yeah, how do we go about getting that capital improvement thing started?
You direct staff to start it. If you want that to be on the next agenda, we'll
To the chairperson, is that right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
REC committee has not met. Their next meeting is scheduled for later in the month, and I am hoping to meet with them to give them an update on what's transpired with regard to the completion of the REC plan that they worked hard on, and the grant application. I will say that a number of letters of support came out of the REC committee, based on their networking pickleball folks, a couple others that were instrumental in the application. Roads?
The road committee did, road committee did not meet due to lack of business, so nothing to report. Next meeting, I believe, is in May.
Do you want to keep the planning and zoning report on here, because basically, the planning and zoning report is I mean, it's what we meet for, so.
I always kind of wondered that, but it was in there on the agenda that you had to have it.
I'll take it off from now on, but essentially, Eric's working on Fish and Wildlife Grant that we received to help out at Lindbergh's pit there, there was some stream restoration to decrease the water temperature for brook trout, so it was our first federal grant that we received. And it was for, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars or so, and we're working in conjunction with Eagle and the Lakes Superior Community, or Lakes Superior Watershed Partnership? Superior Watershed Partnership, yeah, there's so many different acronyms, I just wanted to say LSCP, that wouldn't have been accurate.
What's the name of that grant, Doug, that you're working on?
Um, I can send it to you in an email, Denny.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
But
Which waterway are you doing?
It's a Campo Creek. Yeah, so there's a bridge reconstruction, some stream restoration.
By, by the gravel pit there?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's to help with the, the environment for the coast
Brook, brook trout.
Brook trout?
Mm-hmm.
And they, they come down that far in Campo Creek?
Apparently, they do, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that one.
Okay.
If you could please send it to me.
We can send details up.
Yeah.
Eric can send you a whole, well, bedside manner.
It's digital, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great, yeah, yeah, thanks, I, I appreciate seeing that.
We've been also meeting regarding a, a large residential development, those discussions continue to occur. Yeah, there's a number of things going on that are kind of behind the scenes at this time.
Maybe you should leave that on there, just so we can find out about these things, because otherwise, if there's no place to talk about it.
Sure, yeah.
Staff side of things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or non-agenda planning report, or, you know, something that we don't see on the agenda. That we're still interested in, so. Okay. Uh, any announcements? Any public comment? No?
Thought you were gonna get the name of that restaurant tonight, didn't you, that's why you're here. I, most people know what it is already.
Yeah, you have a leak in the township, you know.
Is it in the water department?
Keeping my mouth shut.
Uh, but with respect to the developers, we're not at liberty to say.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, any additional comments by planning commissioners? Steven?
Yeah, a couple, so we had the discussion about that service drive, and I, I think it was a little, it was a little disingenuous, because I'm looking at the service drives here, and I would consider this a service drive that is on the south side of Lowe's, right, and it continues on to the south side of whatever else is over there, and then you got Burger King there, but it's not going through parking lanes, where people can back out into it. That's not, that's not what they're got designed for this new project, they're going through a parking lot that has parking, parked cars on both sides, and then into the next portion of property at Franco, which has park, parking lots on both sides of that. and then into the next portion of property at Freco, which has park, parking lots on both sides that have access, and the center thing, that's not a service road, that's just driving through parking lots. Am I, am I interpreting that correctly, because these look, these look like service drives, way up the Meyer and across in front of Lowe's and on the other side of Lowe's.
There's parking spaces on the south side of Lowe's Service Drive.
And come up, what, twelfth? Okay, okay.
But there's islands in there, separate enough.
But if you look there, how many cars are usually parked there, zip? I'm just saying that you're going through a, you know, retail that has, you're driving through a parking lot, it's not a service drive by any stretch of the imagination. I don't think. Anyway, that's just the point there, the other point I have is, when we get copies of this, I can't read that. I mean, I, I, no, no, it's, it's not the size, it's this, I, like, there's, you can't, there's.
Sometimes they don't include those pages because they have no information that's relevant to you.
I know, but the line work, I mean, the line work is intelligible, I mean, maybe it's the layers that are, are coming up in your PDFs or something, because they're coming off AutoCAD drawings and transferring them to a PDF format, and something's getting lost here, because the only thing that shows up here is this crosshatch.
Right.
You know, and, and it's not only this page, there, there are other pages too where the information is just, it's not, it's not available on these sheets. Your sheets probably have them because they're tag prints.
Well, that's why I brought, you know, the utility plan.
But it, I mean, for, for us to look at them is like holy tamale, I mean, it's almost to the point of uselessness. And I do like looking at plans, you know that.
I do know that, Steve, thank you.
Jenny, any additional comments?
Uh, none for me, thank you.
Linda?
Well, um, so I have a question, um, what's the, what's the progress of the mini golf course?
Uh, that project has been canceled. Yeah.
So when projects that we approved get canceled, does someone tell us that, or do we not need to know that?
You just decided not to do it.
Too much rock. Yeah, I just, just found that out.
No, I, I, I wondered if we, as the planning board.
I thought we already talked about this, actually, at the planning commission level.
No.
That the project has been.
I think we did.
Shut down, I think we did.
Yeah.
So I didn't listen.
It was in the paper, too.
Well, I don't get it either.
Oh.
Do we know about the, uh, the other marijuana dispensary that we approved across from the old Bonanza, is there anything happening with that, or?
Um, we, we signed off on some zoning recently, or not zoning, we obviously approved zoning and everything for it. There were some documents that were from the state that I signed off on recently, uh, and the clerk signed off on, and those were sent back, so I'm not sure what the holdup is with that, but if they go too long, they're gonna lose their.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know if, if the Township Board is considered, but fifty-six thousand bucks per licensee to the township, and I can't see it going down, because the city of Marquette got a quarter million.
And the county got money.
Well, yeah, well, that was part of the, part of, you know, that total, but I mean, a quarter million from the city of Marquette because they have five.
Right, right, but the county got more money, too. That money the city and the township gets is separate from what the county gets. So, um, it's ve, it's very.
I thought it was just what the county got was part of that.
No, no, it's very interesting, but the money, as I understand it, is based on the taxes that go to the state, and then there's a formula, so just because we have more facilities won't mean that we'll always get fifty-six thousand.
No, but everybody gets the same share.
Correct, you're correct, Steve, right.
So two is better than one.
Yeah, and it's very interesting to follow, um, just because I don't think we even thought we were getting any money this year. That was my understanding when I spoke with the manager, he didn't know because he didn't think that we were open long enough, but.
It's double what we got last year. I think last year we got like twenty-seven thousand.
Oh, well, I don't think, I don't think he thought we got anything last year.
Who?
No, I'll, I'll have to look at that.
Who thought that?
The manager.
John?
Yeah.
And, and so the, the money that we got was based on the fact that we granted two licenses?
No, one.
We granted two, but it's.
Two.
It has to be an operation.
It has to be an operation.
Okay.
It had to be an operation in two thousand twenty-one. There's all kinds of rules, and, you know, I don't think we know, and not the, I don't know.
Well, then, does it carry over from year to year?
Every year, there's a, there's a dispersment.
It's a new metric, yeah.
Based on a total, total something or other that the state.
There certainly is an increase in the number of people or communities requesting um licensed facilities in their area, I mean, Ishburning just asked, I think, for two. Yeah.
So if, if, uh, this company doesn't open theirs by a certain amount of time, they lose it, can the township say, well, if you're not gonna, if you're not going to open this, we want to give a license to somebody else so we can get fifty-six thousand more next year?
I think we have to wait, so.
Yeah, I think there's, um, I just had a conversation last night at like nine o'clock with the county commissioner who has indicated that there's some interest in one of our vacant properties for a couple of other facilities that aren't currently located in the township, uh, and they're not the retail, they'd be a class A, B, C, or grower, either medical or um adult use, and then a um processing facility.
Well, so what's?
Along with a corporate headquarters.
So what's the process for this group to set in motion the expansion of the number of licenses, what do we, what do we have to tell you?
Um, well, you're proposing a zoning text amendment, but it's also gonna be an amendment to the marijuana ordinance, so that'll have to come in maybe some kind of transmission or a conversation with the Township Board, because there is a board ordinance in place, and then there's a zoning ordinance which kind of supports that board ordinance, so actually, I think you, it wouldn't even be a, um, it wouldn't even be a zoning text amendment, it would be an amendment to that board ordinance to increase the number of licenses. So that would be a transmission or a request from the planning commission, perhaps, uh, to the Township Board to consider that based on interest or based on your, you know, your, your desire to have more.
So it would be, it would be something to, it would be a motion passed by us.
Correct.
To ask them to.
Okay.
Yeah, we could put it on a future agenda, that way you can make a motion on it, if you like.
Yeah, why don't you put it on, uh, seems like there's some interest, right?
Yeah. More revenue.
Next, uh.
Well, yeah, that's one way to look at it.
Yeah.
But are people interested? We only have two licenses, right, and they're gone.
Yeah, and we really haven't had much additional interest in licenses here.
I thought we had four.
Is that separate?
Se- separate, yeah.
So do we have?
None of those have been extinguished yet.
Okay.
I thought we had four, and those two places each use two.
That's correct, yeah.
So we did have four licenses and.
Four retail.
Right.
Yeah, this would be a different type of facility, remember, there were six facility types?
Yeah.
And then you had your transporter, and then you have your outdoor event, which we chose not to participate.
Well, the ones that we issued, though, they were retail for medical and for recreational.
Yeah, and they both each extinguished one.
Right, got you, mm-hmm, okay.
Somebody applied for that, Marquette, and the city had the tourist park for the event.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
October first weekend, and then what is it in, at, in the Gani Township at the airport, is that a processor that's going in there now, did you see that?
Um, I did not.
Okay, it, it wasn't like a dispensary, it was something else, grower maybe, or something different, so. And I had a couple comments, and um, I agree with Steve about the uh traffic situation there with that, I think, um, I think it's gonna create another problem, just like there was where you're coming out of um Lowe's there, where it was kind of bad before, it's, it's kind of hard to see, you know, when you're turning in there, and you, cars are trying to exit there at the same time, but, you know, with, with the lane going through there, I, I think it's kind of a dangerous situation with, especially when you get that other retail spot or order, it's gonna be in the back there with cars going through there, it's, it's not really a street, it's just kind of a lane, I guess.
Well, twenty-four, yeah, twenty-four foot is considered to be a, you know, a driveway access, so.
Is it?
It, it's comparable to that, yeah.
Okay.
You know, I think at first, with any new restaurant, it's going to be, you know, highly desirable by, for a while, and then I think things taper off, and then people figure out how to, they want to use the site, too. Again, we're a little bit hamstrung in that, you know, we don't control our right-ofways, um, so, you know, MDOT did approve that driveway, they did approve it not only for Freco, but they approved it for this project as well. So it's not like, uh, we've been flying blind, or that MDOT's been flying blind, um, and in fact, you know, it was resurrected again because of the highway project, so, you know, those, those design queues were re, I don't know about resubmitted, but they were discussed again because obviously, MDOT didn't want the developer to put in any kind of infrastructure that was just gonna get ripped in, out in a year from now, so I believe it was well-vetted, um, you know, like I said, we'll continue to monitor the situation, and, and they're well aware of our desire to have a a longer taper, if not a dedicated right currently.
And uh, there were a couple things I think we forgot about as well, um, I don't know if you, you want to consider it, you know, these points in the future, but um, was there any kind of access to the pedestrian sidewalk coming from there?
There is no sidewalk here.
Isn't there like a maintenance strip or something?
No.
No, there's nothing at all?
Doesn't extend that far.
Oh.
If there was, we would have been all over it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And no, no plans to put anything in there in the future, then? Because of the access or?
Perhaps in the future, but it won't, even if a pathway is put in there, it won't be put in on private property, it'll be put in within the right-ofway. Uh, future connections can be made at that time, but.
Okay. And then with, with these, you know, I don't know if there'll be another restaurant coming up, but um, we had talked before about the uh order control, you know, that the guy brought up before about that, do you want us to consider that um with these restaurants in the future, or just?
Uh, in the eleven years that I've been here, there's been one person that has brought that up.
Okay.
Out of a community of four thousand people.
I'd rather not, but I was just checking to see what you, what you thought after that.
I mean, it might be well and good to some people to do that, but also, um, you have to have ordinances that are enforceable.
Yeah.
And I, I, that, that gets into an area where, you know, why do they make cars different colors? I kind of like the smell of burgers cooking. Especially this time of year, reminds me of summer and grilling and.
I hear a drifter's song coming out on the boardwalk.
I did read an article somewhere, we're home on, on this subject, that there were vegans that lived in this uh housing complex, and they were trying to get barbecue girls banned from uh being used anywhere in the complex because they didn't want to smell meat or think about meat being, uh, animals being killed in that complex, and it's going to court now to see if they can do that.
Lawyers have to make a living.
I understand that.
Come on.
Understand that, Danny.
That's why we're not in that complex.
Uh, well, it's twenty-twenty-two, and we're really accommodating the needs of a lot of people at this point.
Yeah.
And their particular beliefs, but I, I think we're still good to go with restaurants.
Okay.
What do we do with stuff we don't want to take home, can we just leave it here?
You can leave it there and I'll collect it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
All right, meeting adjourned, eight seventeen.
Okay. I was kind of looking for a Tim Hortons, because they have great butter tarts.
Well, now that we're off the record, we can say what it is, right?
Oh, what is it?
What I told you.
What you told me?
Yeah.
I guess you can go on the web.